I call to order regular session of the Board of Education of Hurford County July 8, 2021, beginning at 5:35 PM at the Endeavor Campus. Mr. Jones, will you lead us in the invocation?
Sure. To God, thank you, Lord, for this day. I thank you, Lord, for many blessings that you blessed us with as individuals, Lord, and us as a school district. To God, I pray that as we meet tonight, that we would bring honor and glory to your name through our words and through our actions. Lord, I do thank you for the privilege that we have to live in a free country, and that freedom doesn't come comes with a contract. And I pray that you would put your hand of protection about the men and women serving in the armed forces. Lord, I pray that you give them wisdom from on high, from insight, as they do their duties, Lord. And Lord, I pray for their families that are missing their loved ones. Lord, I pray that you just fill that gap, Lord, and then bring those families back together. Lord, we give you all the praise, Lord, for all your doing and all your doing. In Jesus' name, up, right? Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Harren, will you lead us in the question?
I salute the question. The ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, God and Christ.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Sherry, were there any public comments? So let the minutes reflect that there were no public comments. Do I have a motion to consider the agenda?
Make a motion to consider the agenda?
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Fraser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that second. Any discussion?
I see we have a potential executive session already on the agenda, and I'd like to also see if we can talk about school personnel-related executive session.
Where is that?
The executive session is...
Oh, I see. You want to add personnel to that? So it'll be executive session for a legal matter and personnel?
Student and student.
And student matter. Anything else? Okay, I will call for a vote, and I will have to do that per district. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
I'm going to mix them up. District four?
Yes.
District five, votes yes, motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion to consider approving the board minutes of June 10, 2021, and June 16, 2021?
Motion.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Harren. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you for that second, Mr. Fraser. Any discussion? I will call for a vote. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five, votes yes, motion carries unanimously. Fiscal year 2022 public budget hearing. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Harren. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you for that second, Mr. Jones. All right. Thank you. Mr. Burleson?
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
After, right? Can't we do it after? I guess, I guess, what do we do? Vote now or after?
Yeah, because you don't think of an action.
Okay, so I'll call for a vote. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five, votes yes, motion carries unanimously. All right, TJ, nail two.
All right, so I'm going to go through the FY '22 letter. So the first slide that we see is our enrollment over the past years. So last year, we ended with 3,223 students. They're still registering to date, so I can't give you an up-to-date enrollment figure on that, but that's what we ended with this past year. For our state funding, our MAEP funding, last year, we had $17.3 million. That funding went down to $16.9 million. It's a decrease of $392,000, mostly because of the state reduced our number of SPED teacher units this year. Also, it's just, it was what it is. So we had a reduction of $392,000 for MAEP funding. The next slide is our average loan funds for next year. So for operations, we're going to be asking for 6.125 million. Our bond payment is a little over $1.1 million, and our three mill note payment is $300,000 this coming year. So a total of a little over $7.5 billion is what we're going to be asking local taxpayers to fund for next year. Our millage over the past few years, that's what this slide shows you. Last year, our millage, our total millage with borrowing and debt payments in our operations was a little over 67 mills, was up a little bit from the previous year, but we also added that three mill note by January. That's when I did the millage. So this year, I haven't received the assessment from the tax assessor yet, so I don't know what I can't give you an idea of what the village is going to do next year, but it should be right around what we're doing. Some budget additions to our budget this year. At the elementary school, as you know, we got quite a bit of federal funds through the ESER program this year. So at the elementary school, their portion of that, they added three instructional interventionist positions, certified teachers. They also added a special education teaching unit due to some class sizes in one of the grades down there. At the middle school for ESER, they added two tutors. That's actually, Mr. Alexander, actually, he phoned me today, he's changing that to just one certified teacher instead of two tutors. Same cause, just he'll get a certified teacher instead of two not certified tutors. He also added a behavior interventionist with his ESER. At the high school, the auditorium will be completed at some point this year, so we added about $150,000 in there for the arts classrooms and the auditorium backstage, all of those areas to furnish all of those classrooms, the backstage area, auditorium.
How much did you say? I'm sorry.
$150,000 is what we've budgeted. We also, Ms. Alfred, decided to do the virtual learning academy with her part of the ESER money, so the grade grades, I believe that's on the agenda for approval tonight, so that's what she's going to do with her money. At the Endeavor, he added a certified tutor to his personnel with the ESER money. District-wide, we, to help us transition, Ms. Beach is going to retire at the end of next year, so help transition someone into that role next year where I add a transportation behavior interventionist. Also, we have some funds aside for AC replacement and some air purifiers in our classrooms and other building areas that'll help disinfect, keep the air clean and disinfect everything in classrooms. Also, through ESER money, we replaced our current bus video system. We're going to have more cameras on the bus, different angles. I think right now, we only have two or three cameras on buses. This is going to give us seven per bus. It gives a lot of outside coverage, gives us a lot of inside coverage, so it's going to greatly improve that area. The salary scale adjustments, which were already approved, the teachers and the teacher assistants, the legislature gave them all the $1,000 for next year. The business office clerical, central office clerical, school office clerical, athletics, some athletic and activity supplements were adjusted, and the administrative scale was adjusted, so. Some deletions from the budget at the elementary school. They deleted a clerk position and a teacher assistant position, and that was basically to get the SPED teacher unit that we added a few slides ago. Middle school had no deletions, high school, Endeavor, and district-wide all had deletions. The next slide is our fund balance history. So at the end of fiscal year '21, we're going to have $5.6 million in fund balance. The reason it went up, like I said, a lot of federal money come in, that some of the positions that normally districts would pay for were able to be funded out of those federal funds, which helped free up some funds to do those HVAC replacements and things that we had planned over the next year or two. So the next slide is, it just takes our $5.6 million fund balance. The board reserves $1.7 million, which is 7% of our revenue, to remain in fund balance for cash flow purposes. So that leaves us $3.9 million of unreserved fund balance. Next slide shows, so you take that $3.9 million, we're going to have $24.2 million in revenue and expenditures, which we're not going into our fund balance right now, so at the end of the year, we should have $3.9 million without any amendments throughout the year. Next slide shows where our revenue comes from. Like I said, we have a big influence of federal funds coming our way over the next few years. So our federal percentage went up quite a bit to 28%, just a little over $10 million. Our local is 22%, which is 7.9 million, and our state share of revenue is about 50% at $18 million. Where our money goes, expenditures, the largest portion is, of course, instruction, that's our teachers and everything that everything that touches the classroom as far as their salaries, supplies, and things go. The next largest item is facilities at 7%. That's everything to keep the buildings running. Next one is at 7% instructional support, that's your counselors, your social workers, everything, everyone that supports what goes on in the classroom. Those interventionists would be considered that also. 5% would be debt. Another 5% would be school administration, that's your principals and their staff. Another 5% is food services, that's everything in the cafeterias. The next 5% is transportation, that's getting the kids to and from school every day. Executive administration is at 4%. That's Mr. Humkin's office, that's Ms. Shields' office is considered executive administration. Mr. Posey's office is considered executive administration, and even the board expenses is considered that. So that's what's involved in that 5%. Technology, 3%. 2% of our budget goes to athletics and activities for their supplements and supplies. 1% goes to the business office, and the last 1% goes to school security. Any questions?
TJ, will you elaborate a little bit more on the money that we were able to flow into the fund balance and what our plans are as we come back to the board later, that use those funds that we put into our fund balance?
Yes, total, total over all of the ESER funds, we were able to free up, I believe it's somewhere around $2.5 million over the next between last year, we freed up somewhere around $700, $800,000. This year, we were able to free up another $700, $800,000, and then the following year, we'll close it out. But so all in all, we'll be able to free up around $2.5 million to do some HVAC replacements due to the air purifiers in classrooms. We've already done them on the buses, that came in the last year's budget. So just a lot of capital improvements and things that just need to be replaced to keep our facilities up to date. Floors are another one. If we have money left over, I'd love to do the windows in our older buildings, like A-Hall and 7th Grade Hall at the middle school. So it just, we'll see how far the money goes after the HVAC replacements. And that's something that Warren and Mr. Crabtree, who we hired last month, that's something that they're working on right now to see exactly what needs to be replaced.
So we're on Mr. Fraser with that one. He doesn't want to let go of the buttons.
But that is the layout that they worked hard to save for things like.
I guess what this, but the 1.7 million, that's reserved, unreserved?
That's the reserve.
That's reserved?
Yes. Yeah, 1.7 is what I really need for cash flow purposes when November, December gets, to make payroll.
Right, so just make sure it's reserved.
I do want to make note, give credit to Mr. Burleson, the technology department, for their forward thinking five years ago. You know, a lot of these ESER funds came down from federal government because of the pandemic, but devices and bandwidth into these school districts. You've already done that, and that's the reason we're able to free up some of this stuff. So it's just a credit to our technology department, and Mr. Burleson working and getting those projects to you, and a lot of those were grants, remember, regularly. And so that's why we're able to free this up and be able to put it into capital improvements, which are nice to me.
Good job. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the 2021, oh wait, no, I'm sorry, we're going to review it. 2021-2022 PRC School District Relaunch Plan Public Hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Bur. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Harren. I will call for a vote. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five, votes yes, motion carries unanimously.
Yes, ma'am. Apologize up for my croaky voice, and I'll do the best I can to get through this. You have a copy of this. Again, this will replace your relaunch plan from last year. And again, just going to touch on some hot points. The first thing you see is our school time that you've already approved in previous board meetings. Another hot topic here is the personal protective equipment there on the first page, face coverings are optional for all students, employees, and visitors on the campus and school buses. Virtual distance learning is still an option. We do have a link on there that takes them to our virtual learning plan, and how they apply for that is what. Screening protocols is different as well. We will not be screening students at their entrances and at the school buses in the upcoming year. And we're going to ask our parents, they did a good job last year, we're going to ask you to continue that, as we did. From my knowledge, somebody created it wrong, I don't think we had to turn a student away because of a fever or anything like that. Obviously, the parents were doing their job before they put them on the bus or brought them to school. And so anyway, we're asking our parents to continue that screening process, and our employees to screen themselves as well. Student transportation, again, we'll go back to our normal transportation. And, you know, remember, we started last year, you had one seat per seat, unless you were a family member, you could ride in the same seat. So all of that will be discontinued, back to normal there. Student meals, hoping to get back to normal there as well, with breakfast and lunch eaten in the cafeteria areas, and we still have grab and go. We had grab and go before the pandemic, if you remember. Breakfast loves, kids love, especially the secondary level, come through those grab and go items. But we'll get back to some normalcy in our cafeterias as well. I know at the elementary campus, they're really excited to get in that new cafeteria, so real excited about that. Student assemblies and field trips, that'll still be on an approval basis, and we'll review those. Athletics activities, we'll still follow the guidelines, we may just say, hey, going on down to the quarantines and guidelines. We're staying with the same guidelines we had, except for students about, if you remember correctly, I don't remember if it was around January, February, CDC come out and dropped it to 10 days, 14 to 10. We stayed with 14, but it was confusing things to stay, stay the course. We are bringing that since we're starting new year, it's going to be 10 days. Employees were already at 10 days. Students had to be 14, so students and employees next year will be 14. Shoot tendons if there's a positive test in the home, or if a student or employee tests positive themselves. Cohort group quarantine stays the same. We're still going to monitor, we will still track all of our COVID cases. If we have three or more COVID positive cases in a cohort group, then that cohort group will be quarantined for 10 days from the final contact of the last individual that tests positive. Only other change to that is now that the vaccination is out, and we finished up the year with this for employees, because it was, the vaccination was available for employees. Starting in March, we had a program where we vaccinated any of our employees who wanted to. And so now that it's available for students 12 and above as well, any student or employee who is fully vaccinated, fully vaccinated means you have completed your second shot. By two weeks, you're considered fully vaccinated, and you will not have to be quarantined if you meet one of the quarantine requirements. You won't have to quarantine unless you still have symptoms. You still have symptoms, it doesn't matter if you're fully vaccinated or not. COVID leave, of course, has expired, but we still will provide administrative leave for an employee that we require to quarantine. So if we make them go home because of a required quarantine because of COVID, we'll provide them administrative leave if we require them to do that. If they self-quarantine, that's on them to use their personal sick leave if they self-quarantine. And as always, we'll communicate this plan once it's approved through our communication channels that we have throughout the district with email, social media, website, as well.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Any word about the meals? And are that, do you think that the state will be providing the free lunches again, breakfasts and lunches against this show?
It's still free all year, right?
It is.
Free all year. K through 12, right?
Yes.
K through 12. I'll meet you some lunch.
That was, go ahead, Ms. Amaker.
It's just a kiss.
Just a kiss. We're slinging, you look 17, come home happy.
Go ahead, Ms. Amaker.
We ended this meeting for one year, so that might be, we give this that term.
Okay.
I will, then, there are labor standards that will not apply. We will continue to feed the children free, but we must meet the traditional guidelines pre-COVID, which is back, we will always COVID, and offer a couple of drinks.
Okay.
Go ahead and check in about it, though we might see one on our press, so we'll do it if we provide free.
That's awesome. I'm sure that parents would like to hear that. And then I had another question. And this has been a hot topic. As far as the quarantining, if the cohort, if they should quarantine, if you find there's a group of people who should quarantine, teachers, students, whomever, and they have had the vaccine, are we asking them for proof of the vaccination?
Yes.
Okay, so they would have to prove that they have been vaccinated with the card.
You still look, students are employees. Once you're required to quarantine, you show your card that you're fully vaccinated, then you would be removed from that quarantine list, whether it's students, whether it's employees.
Now, that vaccination is not at any point going to be requested to be proven to the school district, other than if there is a possibility that they are asked to quarantine or something. Other than that, there's no reason that the school district would be asking for proof. All right, does anybody else have any question?
You asked my question.
I'm sorry. All right, thank you, Mr. Lockman.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Superintendent's report, might as well just keep that ball.
You're right. You have your monthly financial record reports. You also have this month's annual wellness report prepared by Ms. Amaker, our wellness coordinator. So as you read through those, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to shoot us an email or ask, provide that information to you. We've had a busy, busy summer, and I know during the summer, we have a lot of professional development going on, especially our administrative team. We completed our annual summer admin conference, and our theme this year was PRC Renaissance Relaunching X. You know, we began the week reflecting on this past year, very challenging school year, and it was very important for us just to reflect on the successes and the challenges, and also to restore goals and expectations, you know, kind of threw us a pro loop. And some things that were priorities, they got moved down, and some other things that might have been on the list got moved up. You know, as you go to school during the pandemic, safety went to the top and stayed there, and everything else, you know. We got to it as we could, so to speak, but we were restoring goals and expectations as we moved forward academically. You know, went to school basically half a day last year, for 180 days. We got to get after, to be honest with you, we got to get after. Our administrative team's got to get after, teachers forced out everybody, and we look forward to restore those goals and expectations. But also, you know, we talked about rethinking, you know, how can we do things better? Pandemic showed us, you know what, there's some things that we can do a little bit differently, okay? We're streaming our board meetings, and that'll continue, you know, so there are some things that made us rethink and moving forward. You know, how can we be better than ever happened, because we do have some gaps there academically that we've got to make up. We also had a tremendous guest speaker, Dr. Carter Evers from Blue Devil here. She's a superintendent pastor at G N. She came out and spoke to us. We also had great team-building activity, and my voice is going down. So I'm going to ask Dr. Perkett, Dr. Lobe, and then...
Take the TJ, take the...
There are awards at the conference.
There you go.
So the award that I gave was for not adoring, and it was giving to me.
Oh, well deserved.
The nominee was the Dragon Slayer Awards. The person who's pure nominated, the person who's been over proven for our tree, and that was given to me.
And we have a team-building activity, the EXO in place, we're fully at the NAC team sponsoring, for everybody to do that. And so, my award was the Game of Thrones, and there's two patches, we get a team to, and also Alexander and Santa.
That's really my little topic.
You're still upset.
We also had Just Fix a Trade Day. We also had a just fixed the trade day yesterday. Well, Dr. Burkett, Dr. Bogan, tell us about our trade day for our teachers.
So, um, we had to write a trade day at the elementary school and we presented to the end of the day our auditorium with the well-suffered graduate winter thinking for the school. And the teachers were greeted with um the practice services, which was our leadership team. And they also had a coffee bar, fifty six teachers attended and um completed our part-time with teachers. The leadership team offered a morning breakout on PD sessions that included the topics of assessment, faculty, interior vision. In the afternoon, our teachers were guided by a grade level team and they adjusted their pacing time and completed their career form back in the middle of the day. It was really nice to feel that that is what we can and we can like have a conference here and I will go to the same American right. Yeah, at the Little School, um, campus, we had over seventy teachers, um, pretty amazing. Uh, eight of those were new teachers, so we got to spend some time with our new teachers and um, you know, give them a foot in. Because it's a big year for all new teachers. Um, we reviewed today test data, the um, the, we reviewed pacing lines, revised pacing lines, revised comment assessments that they did every year. Um, they collaborated together, they started lessons like this. So we're getting ahead of uh the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, I need to say that. We were planning to relaunch excellence.
Thank you ladies for providing that report. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Burleson, as you know, it's been raining, I think, every day. So there's not a lot to report on construction, but I'll let Mr. Burleson uh give that report.
Yeah, the farmers are happy, construction pretty much. So uh, like Mr. Lumpkin said, that uh they're in a whole lot to report. They're, they're still uh working to get the back parking lot and the road complete uh behind uh G, the gym and, and seventh grade hall. Um, possible move at the carrier campus. So uh, they're still working on that to get it completed by the, you know, start of school. Um, I did want to share a picture uh of, we received today of a new auditorium seating. So uh I should also share it with you to you email, but uh if you can see it up there, the, the, the royal blue, uh it has a, like a charcoal uh desktop. Three hundred of the one thousand chairs will have those, those little desktop uh for if they, if they want to have testing uh in there or whole class in there, whatever the high school wants to do, um, they can, they can use those, those little tabletops for, for that. Uh, I'll give you a little, a little update, our uh technology, our safety brand, uh it's gonna be starting next week. Uh the phones, the intercoms, uh the, the alert system that I had you on a few months ago, uh they're gonna start installing that next week. So hopefully that's gonna be done by the end of school, well. Any questions about construction?
Thank you, Mr. Burleson. I said it in the chair, it's, it's nice.
Thanks.
Really, really excited.
That's a great idea.
I asked him where the other diamond and that and that were. So uh, yeah, really excited about that. Uh, just a couple announcements and dates you remember for the board, uh, what their community lives. You got some big people to throw on there. Send an email to Ms. Corlin, please.
You didn't send that email out, did you? Did you send that out again?
Yeah, I did.
You did?
Miss Kirk.
Wait, you're over.
Okay, can you send it again? So you still remind me, I don't know if I'm seeing it, okay.
Okay.
Why, did you get the email? You replied, you replied already.
No, I didn't.
He has not.
I got email and I had some questions. We got a few community members that I put on too.
Okay.
That's been these wires and stuff like that.
Yeah, I have to have it.
So I've got a few, I've got her names on, so we can help grab some.
Yeah.
Our district really helped. You know, we have talked about that with some people that was maybe last year.
Oh, okay.
They didn't get a chance to.
I still have their stuff.
So no, they may be, try to make a change.
That's true, that's true. Good idea.
So we're gonna work hard on that and get that in place uh uh by August, by the end of August, so we can start those meetings. And speaking of August, August second is our first day for employees. Actually, our, our new Blue Teachers and employees will come on July thirty. Our first regular day for employees, August second, and our students will be rolling in on August the fifth. And we are looking forward as Dr. Bogan mentioned, to relaunch excellence here in Port Kenny School District. And that completes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Lumpkin. I love the name, the relaunch. I mean, I, I, I think that's awesome because that's exactly, it's a launch and we're gonna relaunch. I love that. Um, and I love the, the dual purpose of the chairs. That's a great, fabulous idea, fabulous. Kudos on that one. So that, that's typical Blue Devil style. Everything is dual purposed. You know, we're gonna find a way to use it in multi-faceted, you know, get the most out of it. Thank you.
Efficiency.
Wait, which is that?
Efficiency.
Efficiency, that's right. Um, okay. Do I have a motion to consider approving the following financial items? And if the board seems fit, I'll take that A through M.
Motion to consider approving the following financial items, A through, you know.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Jones. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, for that second. Any discussion? I will call for a vote, District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five votes yes, motion carries unanimously. Under Vaughn, do I have a motion considering approving pay application number thirteen to Colony Construction?
Make a motion to consider approving pay application number thirteen to Colony Construction.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Jones. Do I have a second? I mean, Mr. Fraser.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Herron, for that second. Any discussion? I will call for a vote, District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five votes yes, motion carries unanimously. Y'all are just lucky that I'm not, not like number one or two, because then I'd have to call, then try to vote, then try to... Thank God I'm number five. It's a lot for my ADD brain. Okay. Under consent agenda, and that goes um A through L, right? Do I have a motion to consider the consent agenda? A through L.
Make a motion to consider the consent agenda, A through L.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Jones. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, for that second. I will call for a vote, District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five votes yes, motion carries unanimously. How are our policies? Do I need to call individually?
No, I think we can.
Oh, good. Under policies, do I have a motion to approve the policies? And it'll, I'll take that A through B.
Motion.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Herron. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, for that second. Any discussion? I will call for a vote, District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five votes yes, motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion to consider approving the two thousand and twenty-one and the two thousand and twenty-two PRC School District relaunch plan?
So motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, for that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that second. Any discussion? Mr. Lumpkin reviewed that with us thoroughly. I will call for a vote, District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five votes yes, we are relaunching, motion carries unanimously. Do I have a motion, oh, do, do I have a motion to discuss reviewing annual board slash superintendent goals?
Motion to discuss reviewing annual board superintendent's goals?
Thank you, Mr. Fraser, for that motion. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that second. Okay, the discussion, I um wanted to bring it or, or, or ask the board how they felt. Um, y'all saw the attached superintendent goals of which we got together, I believe it was the beginning of last year, from Mr. Lumpkin at some point. I don't know, pandemic timeframe. Um, and we had a workshop and we um reviewed these goals, Mr. Lumpkin's goals, and um came up with a game plan. So my question is, did the board want to continue to use the current goals? Or did you all want to have another workshop to revisit those goals and to tweak, work on them, revise them, or whatever? And that is totally up to y'all. Go ahead, anybody, just tell me what y'all think. I'm sitting here.
No, as I reviewed the goals, both for the board and also for the superintendent, you know, certainly uh everything is pleased to be geared toward making sure we have a, a good and improved school system for our kids. And one of the things is it has to be measurable. And so when I look at all the goals that we got, said each one one, two, three, and uh four. It says increase, decrease, but it doesn't give you an actual specific amount of a target. You know, and if you don't really have a target, you really can't say you actually make the goal. Because say I want to increase the attendance, by what? I mean, you can, one student could be the increase, but is that sufficient? So in my mind, it looks like the goal leaving you just a little bit more specific in terms of being a workshop to kind of work on something specific in terms of the actual targets.
Right. Okay, so in your opinion, we should revisit that and maybe have a little workshop. Does that go up here?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you, I mean, I feel like if you have one person who feels like we should have a workshop, then we should probably have a workshop. That's my opinion. If somebody is not totally satisfied, have you? Yeah, I mean, you can't, but...
We discussed it right now.
I mean, all right, do you want to make that motion?
I don't know why my folder's not open.
I, I would like to make a, like, make a motion that we schedule a workshop to revisit and perhaps tweak the goals to be a little bit more specific so we can actually have something that's measured.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. I don't know why I can't open the link. Not that I need to, but now I'm like hypersensitive about that.
It is, it's right, but if you click on the top.
Which one do you want?
It's okay. All right, so we have a motion and we have a second.
Some, some of these, oh, sorry, some of these are, they are specific.
I opened it, I just, so it's weird, I guess it's this thing, I can't open it for some reason.
I guess not, I guess not.
Okay. Um, so I will call for a vote, we have a motion and a second, uh District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five votes yes, motion carries unanimously. So that opens up a conversation about when. So do y'all want to go ahead and um try to look at our calendars real quick and get us a time frame?
We need to make a motion.
I don't think so.
Yes.
Why? For a time, for a date, for...
Once you get it, once you get it, yes.
They're saying, I, I mean, our conference is not just coming, but the following, so that following, I'm kind of booked up. But anytime in August, I'll look good.
Assistant, it's not available this month.
Yeah, I'm busy.
You're going, you're going August?
Uh, August looks down pretty good. You have anything, Mr. Fraser?
I, I can put my schedule on this.
Mr. Jones. August is good. Ms. Burge, do you have any time in August that is unavailable, that we, that you cannot?
Okay.
August is open.
Is it like a few hours, half day?
It's like a half a day, no, that's pretty good.
The, your first goal, increase student, you, you know, that, that's gonna be a lot of discussion because we're basically starting over from scratch. So, right?
And we need to see, we have to have, you know, people available.
You're gonna have, you're gonna have to have those three there.
Right.
Uh, again, instructional side, setting those goals for student achievement. One of the uh goals is a sound, fun balance, which person might be involved in as well. We'll be there.
August is good for y'all.
I wouldn't go begin the August, it was school year starting, all that, getting the back of August.
Is it almost unfair to gauge off of last year?
Well, you won't be able to, you're gonna set those.
You just have to set.
Yeah.
The point is, we're talking about an increase, though. Where do you increase it from? I think it's last year.
We, we tested last year, so we do have some data points that we can look at. We did.
And you can only look at historical increase of, just like, performance, it can come up like a baseline, so you're saying, right?
So what about the week of like the twenty-third, say, because our board meetings that, the twelfth.
It's the twelfth.
And then school is starting that week before that and then maybe get a rule in that following week, so say the week of the twenty-third sometime. Maybe twenty-fourth. How's the twenty-fourth sound to everybody?
Tuesday. Tuesday's not, not good for me.
What's the better day?
The time I got.
Sixteen. Sixteen.
Well, my, Mr. Jones, he said, he can't do it. We're best, this is the best interview. What, the twenty-sixth?
That's Thursday.
Thursday's bad.
That, I'll have to look.
Okay.
I, I can maybe calculate it.
Twenty-sixth, then? What about the twenty-fifth?
I don't know, we've not even had the Oscars.
Twenty-fifth is bad, I mean.
Twenty-sixth is good, okay. Like four, three? Or staff?
You're not much to having a...
Not better.
Okay, like four, four would be your...
Is it the morning on Thursday?
Not for him, though.
Oh.
That's the thing, I'm wearing a, he's, you know, I'm fine. You're flexible, pretty, well, pretty flexible. I'm pretty flexible for working.
I'm out of town again on Thursday, but...
But Wednesday is...
Morning, but Wednesday's fine.
One o'clock? No, which is it, four?
Four.
Okay, four o'clock? On Wednesday, is that okay?
Twenty-fifth is twenty-fifth.
We, we, we can't do mornings, who's a...
He'd have to take off.
He can't do it on Wednesday. I just was thinking about, like, this, well, one o'clock, they, they would have to leave.
Four.
Oh, four o'clock, I just think about, you know, like, get off of work. They want to go, they want to go home. The staff.
They don't want to go home, they like being here. Look at those smiling faces.
They do. Whatever, just man of the people.
Four. Okay, so let's see, the twenty-fifth at four o'clock, Ms. Burge, does that work for you? Mr. Lumpkin, we'll, we'll shoot for that?
Twenty-five.
Okay. So this will be our workshop.
So that's...
It's like a half a day, you don't, although, you work.
If we have to do two, we can. I mean, if we have to do, you know, part of it, but this, the one thing, the, we have to feel good about these goals, you know? This is, in my opinion, the heart of what we should be doing. You know, making sure that what we want our children's growth to be, our students' growth, and how we're holding our superintendent accountable. So we have to get it done.
And we think in two, three hours, one?
I don't know, I mean, I'm saying four, if we work two hours and three hours and something comes up we can't do anymore, I mean, then we have to revisit it. I just don't know. Last time, I think we did it during the day and that, that was the difference, is we came... came in at like early, we ate something real quick and we just worked.
Worked until lunch.
Yeah.
And we didn't finish.
No, no, we, we did half of what we needed to do.
It's, it's, it's a lot, you start digging into it, it's a lot.
Okay, so let's.
If you want to do it earlier, I can help you. Plans to do stuff.
One, one o'clock.
Can you show, because I know you're picking up more responsibility. Two. Okay, let's move it to one.
One thing we can do to, to help out, is our team can get together and, I mean, your, your general basis is going to be in these four areas, and we can put some things together. We have our goals that are very specific, we can share, have that ready to share, y'all think you have that ready to share with them? And, you know, you'll have some.
Right, right, because you know that's the gist of where we're going, that follows. So what would you all feel is the best thing for our students and what can we possibly shift to achieve?
Right.
You know, what's, what's, um, okay, so one, y'all want to try that now?
Make a motion, we have a board workshop on August the twenty-fifth, one P U.
Okay, we change that.
Second.
So I have a motion, I have a second, I will call for a vote, District One.
Yes.
District Two.
Yes.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Yes.
District Five votes yes, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Let's go on for another calendar search, don't put your phones away, guys. Do I have a motion to consider discussing a date for a second July twenty-twenty-one board meeting? Give me a motion.
Uh, motion?
Thank you, Mr. Herron, for that motion. Give me a second.
Second.
Let's do the date, the motion, same.
Oh, well, we can, well, we could have did that, I'm sitting here trying to do my phone. Um, okay. Well, I'm more in discussion, so we have a motion and a second. So any discussion, Mr. Lumpkin?
Yeah, I spoke to Ms. Moss earlier about scheduling and putting it on our schedule, which, talking to Mr. Burleson before the meeting. Our next July is going to be on the new board calendars you guys created yet, so, once we get to that discussion, we need to go ahead and plan for two in July, because we always have to add more, that way everybody will have it, everybody will know, because it's just, there's too much getting prepared for the upcoming year, and we want to make sure, I, I just feel bad adding these things on, we have a lot to add on this time, it's just going to happen, there's stuff coming in today that we could add, and it's going to keep going all the way up to school. So, just rather have two, so we cut it off and not feel like we're just throwing stuff on y'all two days before and that type of thing, so.
So really, we want to make an adjustment to our calendar yearly, it'd be a yearly thing and it not just be something we're checking right in the second.
Well, now previously, we tried to avoid that week of the fourth, because you guys were not in, not working, not in the office, so, but. That's what I'm saying, we'll have to wait until we do next year's calendar and we'll look at it, where does the fourth fall, where does that fall, so we, we can't worry about next year right now, because that, that calendar, we haven't.
Yeah.
Now, this one's, uh, earlier.
Yeah, because we changed it, this one, we moved this one up.
We moved this one up.
With this one last.
So with the second, well, I guess I can, uh, with the second and the third, I'm sorry, second and fourth, Thursday being.
Give it up, Stan. Well, what he was saying is, I think, let's just pick one now and then we'll deal with that one, right? And then sure, like.
You never know what the fourth is going to fall and we'd have to move it.
But this is going to be a heads up, we're going to have to have two board meetings next to last. And actually, you, so maybe in June, because we ended up having, it's the summer months, we kind of need two board meetings during the summer months. I know, huh? Because it takes up too much of your time. Look at this town, stop all, stop all your Mr. Burge, but, um.
Be sleeping, baby.
So. Now.
Yeah, let's just get into this, take care of it and we'll worry about the.
But the twenty-second, right, Tuesday? Two weeks.
I will not be in town after July twentieth till probably August second, I'm going to be out of town, but I can attend virtually if that's possible.
Well, and that is, that week is when we have conferences, but I'm going to come home and then we have, the, our P R C D Y W is competing at the state level, so I'm going when? The twenty-second, I have to be up there. But I can also do it virtually if I have to.
Twenty-nine?
And I can't do it virtually? I'm done? So, but I could do it virtually if we needed to. Or we can do it on my an, my thirty-first anniversary, the twenty-first, and I can spend it with y'all, that afternoon.
So you're saying you won't be.
Thirty-first anniversary, I can spend it with y'all.
So you won't be able to do it on the fifteenth, that's too soon?
I don't know, I still.
Yeah, again, that's why we moved it up, is because of the, uh, the superintendent's conference and the administration conference.
Yeah, they have their conference.
Next week. That's why we moved it up to tonight. Okay.
What about the last week?
Twenty-nine?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Then she's increasing.
Oh, is she going?
She'll be virtually, she said.
She can do virtually, she said.
I'm the same way, I can do virtually, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
What about the twenty-seventh?
I'm good, I'll be here.
Ms. Burge, are you home on the twenty-seventh?
No.
What did she say?
No.
Okay.
But she can do virtually.
She could do virtually, I can be here. You're, you're good? That afternoon, it's a board meeting, so it would be in the afternoon.
If you quit with one superintendent's board, I mean, it's just real business.
Me, you.
I can be here.
How much, we could do it all virtually, we've done it.
We can do it all virtually.
Is it going to be just a few items?
It's just going to be basically.
Whatever, probably.
Have some construction stuff that'll come in.
Right.
Pay applications we came in today. So, it'll, yeah. General business that you do, everyone, personnel, bond, payments, that type stuff.
Do I?
We make it so.
Yeah.